Robust as I used to be. And Ray, you have to slow down. That's what my sister has told me too. So with that thought, I'm going to thank the Lord for this day and in praising for it. Lord, I thank you for bringing me here this morning and keeping me reasonably free from injury. And I thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to pray for this group of people that are operating this county and keeping things rolling. We pray, Lord, that you will guide them and they will look to you for guidance. And Lord, we know that you know everything, nothing surprises you, and you are ready for helping any of us in our daily walk, help us to walk with you in all of our activities. We pray in Jesus' name.
Would you like to be next?
Good morning. My name's Melissa Hoover Connor, and I live at seventy-seven ten Cattail Road in Walnut Township. Commissioners, this morning I come before you on behalf of the more than six thousand people that live in Walnut Township. Those good people have donated tens of thousands of dollars to our organization so that we might have legal representation when we go before the Ohio Power Siding Board. They believe in us and our cause and our township, our community. I also stand here in front of you to represent the nine hundred and eighty-six people that we have that follow us on Facebook. I know people like to think that Facebook's kind of silly. We don't think that's silly at all. Those people are learning through our posts. We try to keep everything very factual and let them know what we could be looking at down the road. I also stand here in front of our little grassroots organization that we call ourselves Citizens for Fairfield. Myself, the people in the blue shirts who come here week after week have obviously donated thousands of hours of their time to protect their homes, potentially their livelihoods and our community. I also stand here, and I think maybe some people would find this interesting, in front of those people who have leased their land and now want out. God love them. They have to live with this for the rest of their lives should this project go through. I stand here in front of you to represent my husband, my sons, and my grandson. If this goes through, we will always be wondering, is our well water tainted? I stand here in front of you to represent my father, who was a progressive farmer, a critical thinker, and an all-around darn good human being. We have provided you with the information that you need to create the resolution allowed to you through Senate Bill fifty-two to prohibit a specific project, in this case, Eastern Cotton Tail. We know that it doesn't stop Eastern Cotton Tail. You know that it doesn't stop Eastern Cotton Tail. But what it does is it gives us another arrow in our quiver so that when we go before the Ohio Power Siding Board, we can say to them, our community has been consistent in not wanting our land, our prime farmland, to be given over to the renewable energy agenda. We have provided you with the paperwork. Simply fill in the blank and present that to us. It would help us immensely. You see, gentlemen, doing nothing is doing something. There is no neutral. We need you. Thank you very much for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. Beth Cotrell, thirty-five thirty-five Cedar Hill Road, Amanda. I haven't been back since the exclusionary vote, and we wanted to thank you again. We sent an email inviting you. We are having this solar thing this Thursday night, which we know you have other meetings, and Saturday. It's an open house. Everybody's welcome. We've spent thousands of hours also researching and really tried to put this together. It's an informational session, and we'd like to invite everybody personally. I do have, we sent postcards out to the rural route one, so I do have some extra postcards and flyers. Everybody's welcome. Come join us, and as always, we stand in, with behind, I didn't write notes this time, we stand behind our friends with Citizens for Fairfield.
Would you like to be next, please? So Commissioner Fix would like to say something, please.
So appreciate the passion and the persistence of folks who've been coming before us for a couple of years now. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, appreciate the way that you approach this topic, right? All of you have been respectful, professional, and kind, and that's appreciated. Some others, on occasion, not so much, but what you've had to say and the way you've said it is appreciated. So our approach to this, I speak for myself, my approach to this all along has been to try to find the place that is doing what's right for our citizens in the particular area, combined with doing what's right for all one hundred and seventy thousand citizens that we represent, combined with staying away from spending money in court, right? So every time that you all have made a request of us, we do a ton of research, right? Not as much as you spend thousands of hours on it, but we've spent hundreds. Do a lot of research, do a lot of reading, talk to a lot of people, ask a lot of questions, come and visit you on your porch. And then we talk to our legal team, right? And we ask them the question. We're being asked to do this. What are the positives? What are the negatives? What are the possible consequences? So on, so forth. So we passed the resolution to prohibit solar throughout Fairfield County as a result of all of those steps. And then came back and said, well, the law says you can prohibit this one specifically. And Missy, you just said, we know, won't really change the trajectory. You know it, they know it. So we want to do our homework. We want to ask questions, and then we want to talk to our legal team. So we've done those things again. And I just wanted to read, you know, we've got a two-page kind of summary from our legal team as to what can and should or can and could be done, what shouldn't be done. I just want to read the last couple paragraphs to you guys, and it will summarize for you where I am on this. I can't speak for my colleagues, but this is from the county prosecutor. Since Eastern Cotton Tail is a partially grandfather project, it is not held any meetings that would comply with the statutory requirements of RC three oh three point six one, nor would Eastern Cotton Tail be expected to have such meetings. As a partially grandfather project, the requirements of RC three oh three point six one do not apply to it, and the project is free to comply with requirements of Ohio Administrative Code four nine oh six dash three dash oh three instead. As the commissioners are aware, the Board of County Commissioners is a creature of statute and can only act when Ohio law has explicitly granted it power to do so. Since the requirements of RC three oh three point six one are not applicable to the Eastern Cotton Tail project, the Board of County Commissioners has no authority to block or reduce the size of the project by passing a resolution. Passing such a resolution would have no legal effect and could subject the county to potential litigation for exceeding its statutory authority. So based on that, one county commissioner, I don't think it makes sense because it's been acknowledged that anything we do won't have an impact on it, and if we were to do what you're asking us to do, could end us, land us in court, spending tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. Don't think it makes sense for us to move forward with what you've asked us to do. So that's where I'm landing on it. I think we're probably all going to be in the same spot because this is a legal recommendation, but just wanted to let you all know work that we've done and where we landed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on legal?
Nothing to add to what Commissioner Fix has already said.
Administrative update, Tony.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I do have a draft letter prepared in response to Soil and Water regarding their request, so I can provide that to all of you following the meeting.
I've seen the draft. I support the letter, yeah.
Moving on to highlights of resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and for today's voting meeting, there are fourteen resolutions. Highlight a few of those for you here today. There is a resolution assigning authority to myself as well as the deputy county administrator to service sponsors for the twenty-twenty-five Federal Aviation Administration bipartisan infrastructure law grant, a resolution accepting the transfer of earned and unused vacation leave balances from the city of Lancaster to the county for transit employees. So transit employees, if you recall, had an option to be paid out for their remaining vacation balance, be paid out for half, transfer the other half, or transferred in its entirety. And we had, I'd say, a large number that choose to transfer some amount, so this will formally accept that. They also have a resolution establishing a drainage maintenance district for the Stonehill Estates subdivision in Bloom Township, a resolution authorizing a service agreement between the sheriff's office and Lancaster City Schools, and that would be replacing services there. So that's just a routine renewal of that particular school resource officer contract that exists, and a resolution approving an application for the standard twenty-four certifications and assurances for ODOT transit and the commissioners, as well as another one appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category to account transfer and reduce appropriations for the grant fund or the ODOT grant. Rick, you want to add anything for the two of those? Nope? Okay. A no is an acceptable answer.
Sorry, I got sucked into.
What did you say?
I got sucked into an email.
Okay.
Only transfer.
I think we're good, just giving you that opportunity. Bart, budget review, anything to add there?
No update this week.
All right, thank you. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received.
Thank you. The Lancaster Festival hosts an open house reception to honor Maestro Chris Sheldon on July twenty-eighth from eleven AM to one PM at the Mel Event Center. The South Licking Water Conservancy District meeting is today at three PM at the Licking County Agricultural Center in Newark. Wheel of Fortune with Juvenile Probate Court is July twenty-fifth. The Farm Bureau Land Use Plan update will be held July twenty-fifth at seven thirty PM at the Fairfield County Fairgrounds Cricket Hall, and the CFLP Policy Committee will be meeting July twenty-sixth at nine AM at the Licking County Agriculture Department. Following correspondence was received, a petition for an expedited Type Two annexation to the village of Baltimore of eighty-seven point zero plus or minus acres from Walnut Township. Tom Hart is the agent positioner. A press release from the Fairfield County Health Department titled New Community Garden Lancaster. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article by Jeff Barron on July seventeenth titled County Commissioner Steve Davis Talks About Death Threat From Twenty-Five Years Ago. A thank you note from the Decorative Arts Center of Ohio, a memo from Dr. Brown County Auditor, subjects revenues by source governmental activities and expenditures from a countywide perspective, and the sales tax holiday. The auditor's wins of the week, correspondence regarding industrial solar project, and the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Magic Newsletter. That is it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, any old business you'd like to talk about?
Just mention response to Commissioner Fix's remarks earlier. As I think most folks in the audience know, if you may not, but I don't know if it was two or three years ago, solar fields or farms first kind of came to our attention. I did a video kind of explaining how I saw that. At that time, given my experience, superiority with some of these issues, I anticipated that when we got to where we are today, that I might be named as the county's representative on the Ohio Power Siding Board for some or all of these projects. And as someone who used to practice law for thirty years, I just had a perception, a principle, whatever you want to call it, that for me announcing a decision, whether it be in favor of or opposing any of these projects, before I would arrive as our representative at the Power Siding Board, before they had heard any evidence, before the witnesses testified, before we reviewed the administrative regulations, and before some of the most recent announcements from JCAR, I thought, and still think, for me to announce a decision on any of these projects before all of that would be unseemly. That's my opinion. And I've used the analogy before that if there was going to be a trial next week, somebody was maybe accused of something bad, the judge came out the week before the trial, said, hey, we're going to have a trial next week, and after that, we're going to hang the guy. You would think that's funny or entertaining, but I hope you would think it's unprofessional. And that's where I stand on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, so last week, we had the opportunity to spend some time with the Mayor's Association of Fairfield County. Rick Zabrack and his team did a nice job kind of presenting updates on where we are with the land use plan and the growth that's coming and how the villages can best prepare for that. I think the presentation was done well and well-received, so I appreciate our team going out and doing that. Also had a chance to sit in on our state senator, Tim Schaefer's roundtable, business roundtable at the Workforce Center. Business leaders from the three counties that Senator Schaefer represents were there, really talking about all the same issues that we've been talking about here for the last few years, workforce development, transportation, housing, health with daycare, the benefits cliff, all those things that we are working on and talk about on a consistent basis are things that, you know, the business owners are feeling in real life and brought up consistently to Senator Schaefer. Where that goes, I don't know. I know the center had a group there that kind of organized it that was taking really good notes, so hopefully there'll be some activity out of the state senate on some of those topics. We continue to meet with the villages and townships, you know, trying to work cooperatively to get some new community authorities put together. There is development that's now starting to happen, particularly around Thurston and Baltimore, Walnut Township and Lancaster and Greenfield, and so we're working with them to try to make it so everybody can win. We preserve land and protect taxpayers, which is what we have been talking about now for a couple of years, so that is moving forward nicely. So I have an own business.
Commissioner Fix, any new business?
So this week, Thursday, we have the opportunity to work on the model zoning that our regional planning commission has been working on for about six months now. This is another tool in the toolbox that the county is paying for and providing to the townships and villages. When we were talking at the mayor's station the other night, when the mayor said that they went to look at their zoning, and it was written in nineteen seventy-two, and it was so old that the ink was actually fading off the paper, right? They couldn't actually read their own zoning code. So for a lot of these places, I'd say the majority of the townships, some villages in Fairfield County, it's time for an update, and we're working with regional planning, and so all the townships and all the villages are a part of regional planning, so they're all having a say in what goes into the model. And like the land use plan, it's just a tool, right? It's not dictating, it's not saying you have to do this zoning, or your zoning has to be this way. It's simply a model that they can pull down from if they choose to. So that is Thursday night, and then after that, we get to meet with the Farm Bureau to give them an update on what's going on with the land use plan and how things are progressing. So it's going to be a good, busy week.
Commissioner Davis, any new business?
Yeah, I just, I'll share a conversation that I had over the weekend. Couple of years ago, when I first started kind of talking about transit and transit impediments and how our local transit might be improved over time, there was a friend of mine who was like a real right wing. I mean, like, I think I'm right wing, but this guy sails past me and takes up the far right there. But anyway, good person, nice, nice person, but came to me and just ripped me. Said that a good conservative wouldn't want their tax money going to help poor people get a ride. And it's real disappointed in me for bringing up this issue, and we had a respectful conversation about it. Had a chance to visit with him again over the weekend, and when I let him know that on day one, just as a result of some paperwork changes, the match coming from the state and federal government to transit on day one, the projections of revenue match increased by over seven hundred thousand dollars on day one, just because of the paperwork. No additional taxes, no sales tax, no new county money, just changed through the paperwork. And I don't think it moved my right wing conservative friend, but it calmed him down a little bit. So, and now I'll probably hear from a thousand people that don't like the idea, but that's the only one I heard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, and of course, I deeply appreciate all the work Commissioner Davis has done as far as transit and Fisher Fix, the land use plan, and meeting with all the townships and villages. But I think it's also important to notice, Fisher Fix talked about having updated zoning regulations for the, for across Fairfield County, at least bringing it up to the twenty-first century, where it needs to be, because many of, as he mentioned, go back into the seventies and maybe even longer, but then possibly coming up with some sort of uniformity. It wouldn't all necessarily be there, but that would be very helpful because development that just started to stop, township lines or village lines, many times it consequently impacts us all, so it's pretty important to have that in place. And the county helped on that, then just be helpful for those entities, so very appreciative of that. So going around the room, Lisa.
I just wanted to take a minute. I got swept up in something that didn't really have anything to do with myself or my office and was able to reach out to Cory. Cory was able to quickly resolve an issue through his staff, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. Very, very appreciative of your assistance.
Very helpful.
Okay, everybody.
Good to see you, buddy.
Well, probably the biggest thing going on in my life, I mean, a little selfish attitude, family and I had a really good vacation in Montana. We saw absolutely everything. It was great. We started the Badlands, up through Glacier, down through Yellowstone, through the Barretoo Pass, which is incredible if anybody's ever been there. It's a definitely must-see. But now it's back to work, and it has been for about a week here, but anyways, we, we have started chip and seal, which I know anybody that drives on it or rides a bike on it doesn't like it, but my guys are the best in the business, and I'm serious about that. They are really good, and there really is a science behind it. So after a day or two generally things even out on those roads, and you don't have too much dust or too many, too many rocks flying around and whatnot, and it does a great job of sealing it right up. So that's the biggest thing happening in our office right now, other than just taking care of the everyday stuff. That's about it. Thanks, everybody.
So when you're out west, did you see any potential game that you wish you were on? I mean, vacation?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we saw, we saw everything from DRL, Antelope, but the coolest thing was when we got up at Glacier, we saw quite a few big machine and mountains and whatnot, and that's, you don't see those very often, so that was fun.
Director Brown?
Okay. I'd like to begin by thanking Dan Thiele and his team. IT did an exceptional job in communicating about the global issues that were engaged with Microsoft this past week, so thank you for that. Really good communication, really good responsiveness. Thanks also to the Tyler Technologies team who did the same. They did the part that they needed to do, and it's very helpful for enterprise resource planning. The sales tax holiday is July thirtieth through August, and I want to say thank you to Rochelle. If you noticed on our social media post that we were missing the dash, we made it appear as if it was just two days, but it is those full ten days, a little bit longer this year than it has been in the past. And I think it's commendable to the commissioners with the lowest sales tax rate in central Ohio, the lowest and among the lowest in the state. Keep by my phone a tally when people call me and they say that they are moving to Fairfield County and they're asking questions about property taxes or property valuation, and I always try to ask, why is it that you are moving to Fairfield County? And the number one response is always school system, and the second response is affordability. So you contribute to that, you know, with that sales tax rate, so it's a good thing to mention at this point. We are getting new webpages for the hotel motel lodging tax, and those new webpages are comprised of all the frequently asked questions that we receive, hoping to increase the education and outreach for that particular effort. We did have stakeholder engagement with the Decorative Arts Center and the Visit Fairfield County, and those will go live this week. Better work group with the Association of Government Accountants this past week, national conference. It was a virtual work group. We had more than a thousand in attendance, and that work is going to inspire a white paper that I'm beginning now, where the formula is structure plus creativity equals innovation. And we have a number of different examples where that structure and creativity result innovation that has sustainability and replication throughout a statewide basis. And examples are technology improvements with the sexennial updates, and that relates to new technology that we are putting in place that will allow for two different databases to compare to each other, to show exception reports that will cut down at least three weeks of time for that process. It's the first in the state, and it'll be replicated by anybody that uses Tyler Technologies for their assessments. ERP governance and assessment, there's a lot of conversation about that. We are really excited about using ERP in ways that it hasn't been used in the past. Lot split process is another example. We're hoping by the end of the year to have that in place, where it's a digital process as opposed to people having to carry paper from agency to agency to be able to reduce their time and effort in providing that. And also, people sometimes do lot splits one time. It isn't something they do on a regular basis, so it'll help with that process and education and outreach as well. The budget commission, we're getting more stakeholder input to improve that customer service. And then BOR, it's a good time to mention the Board of Revision. We have a manual that's used statewide. We also develop scripts statewide, and many counties are just now beginning their BOR process, and that has been very helpful. I get a call every day from another county that says how helpful that is for them to sustain their processes, too. In September, we will have the Real Estate Assessment Conference at Submarket County. In September, we will have the Real Estate Assessment Conference at market calendars now. That's serving those who have served for veterans. We have approval from the state for that. In November, a CAO conference. Um, September, also a GFWA conference and this next, I believe I will have my final entrepreneurial session in Marysville. And that has been a long process, a couple of years now, but a lot of good data from that that helps inform even the other conferences that we're having in our professional environments. I appreciate those opportunities.
Tell me anything more on that.
Just to follow up on the, uh, what Commissioner Fix mentioned about the meeting with, uh, Senator Schaefer and local businesses. It was great to hear as the businesses went around the room and talked about their barriers, uh, to finding employees. There are things that we are working on heavily here with housing, skill gaps and obviously transportation. So, uh, once in Fairfield County, temper grill from Midwest Fabricating was so complimentary of the stuff that we were doing here in our county. It's just nice to hear once again that we're doing.
Mr. President, if I might. Over the weekend, I was, uh, fortunate enough to have an opportunity to give some remarks and, and one of the points of the remarks I made was in hiring or interviewing people, I thought that the expectation should be of a candidate for a new position or something that they should strive to do the job better than it's ever been done before. And that sounds like kind of a tall order. But if you just flip that around and say, well, nah, I, I want to hire you because I'd kind of like you to do the job a little worse than it was done before. Wouldn't say that, that would sound even crazier. But my point in mentioning those remarks is I think Rick does it better than it's ever been done before.
How else would you approach something? Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. Um, what's going on?
Uh, just, uh, safe and sound this past weekend. Got to wear my emergency management hat for a couple of days, which is, um, so other than that, just been capital projects here. Good stuff.
Dan, you and I were talking about this earlier about, uh, ground strike. Um, how, how it affected a lot of different people. It affected our, uh, title office, it affected the BMV. Uh, statewide, it affected a lot of agencies. Uh, my granddaughter was down in Texas. She had a difficult time getting home. So, I mean, and it's worldwide. And so it just, it's just amazing how one little thing can blow the system up. And so we in Fairfield County, we're always vigilant, right? And, uh, be protected, the best it can be protected.
And one of the things that I had said to you this morning was the product ground strike is certainly one of the, you know, top, um, products and it could have very easily been a product that we might use more, you know, kind of widely in our organization. Um, so it, it's just, it was certainly a situation that no company ever wishes for. And thankfully it was not a cyber type of, um, situation where there must have been attack. Uh, but I, I just got to give props to, you know, three members from our team. Um, while they grumble at times, we have to support the sheriff's office that is 24 by seven. Um, the learning that we got from the sheriff's office, uh, at around 1:00 a.m. was what allowed our team to begin working on, um, discovering and then applying that fix. So Michael Scamminghorn from our team, as well as Ruchi Rice and Alexander Johnson, um, spent the night, um, Friday. So they got things operational for the rest of us when we began, you know, getting, getting the grounds in the morning. So thanks to them.
And I, I will say this, you know, without mentioning counties, some counties were not that fortunate. For me, you bet.
I bet, yes. Uh, this Friday, we are partnering with Fairfield Medical Center to host and, and spark it for part of the festival. We are parking on a bike race and bike decorating contest. Uh, that is for four to 10 year olds, starts at 5:30. Uh, so anybody who comes, uh, anybody.
You can't enter, John.
Children, grandchildren, neighbors, um, four to 10 years old, bring them down for some, uh, some bicycle fun.
So, John, are you gonna enter?
I just, I mean, what defines what you're saying? It's like a journey level or a, I feel like it's some of the qualities that the governor's end of the screen.
Please rise if you're grateful and if you'd be pleasantly entertained.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of the world, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any announcements?
Just that in two weeks, our meeting will be an evening meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigwaw.
So, uh, approval minutes for June 16th and July, June 16th, is that correct?
Yes, July 16th regular meeting and July 16th round two.
Okay, so the June needs to be correct, but July.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 16th regular meeting and the July 16th round two.
Second.
Discussion. Being done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Right.
From the Commissioners, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 copying. A resolution to assign authority to the county administrator or deputy county administrator to serve as the sponsor on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners related to the fiscal year 2025 Federal Aviation Administration bipartisan infrastructure law grant.
The Commissioners, I move items A and D.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll just add on the report on that is our second, uh, in a row for official volunteers will need to, um, increase the size of the terminal to five percent management program. So very low with opportunity.
Official discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For the Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot C. A resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of personnel for June activity paid to Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for Fund 7521.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Tiffany, anything on this? And is this the health department being the sub grant for, um? Yeah, so we'll just give the health department a shout out here for a minute for them being, uh, they stepped up to the plate to help keep this grant going and will, uh, be applying directly to be the grantee, correct? And maybe already have.
Yes, they've already applied and that would be placed October 1st.
But thanks to Joe and his staff for stepping up for this.
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Twenty-three dot D. A resolution to accept the transfer of earned but unused vacation leave balances of Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit employees from the city of Lancaster.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Think that, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Information Technology, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot E. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object categories for general fund 1001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot F. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriate from unappropriated but major expense object category by 2018 public assistance for Fairfield County.
Under Job and Family Services, I move items F, G, and H.
Second.
Being done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot I. A resolution to establish a drainage maintenance district for Stonehill State subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Anything on this, Josh? Thank you. And just a shout out, thank you. You were lone man standing while Holly was on vacation and she were down a staff person. So thanks for keeping you and Shar everything afloat. Appreciate that. And I understand, uh, a new member of the team either joined yesterday or maybe next week. Wonderful. But thank you for all your hard work during that time, Josh.
Be nice, please.
Yep, we'll get him in for an introduction.
Sounds good. Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot J. A resolution authorized the approval of a service agreement filed between Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Lancaster Board of Education.
The Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items J and K.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Transit, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot L. A resolution to approve an application for the standard 2024 certifications and assurances for the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Transit and Lancaster Fairfield Transit and the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners.
For Fairfield County Transit, I move items L and M.
Second.
Being done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot 23 dot N. A resolution authorized the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Being done, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, July 30th at 9:00 a.m.
Any additional items to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time?
President?
Please.
So, and, and that is still not with us, is that?
Unfortunately, she is unable to make it this morning, so we'll reschedule her for another day. She apologizes.
Yeah, it's certainly no problem. I just didn't want the moment to pass without mentioning how much we appreciate her service and look forward to seeing her next.
And, and we do acknowledge your, uh, work as a friend there. Thank you.
We'll do this all again?
We'll do it again. Looking for a move.
Question to Jared?
Second.
On favor, signify, and say aye.
Aye.